I'd like to call the main order and stand for the flags, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Amendments to the agenda.
I have a small one. Under water sewer budget, I put water sewer connection. Can we move that under new business? It shouldn't be under the budget.
So, under new business C, you want a water sewer connection?
Water sewer connection permit, yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I will motion to move item 8B to item 7C. Yes, I'll second that.
We know what we're doing?
Yep.
All those in favor? Aye. Vote. We just move that up to C. Approval of the minutes from April 29. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion excepted, man.
That's the regular meeting.
Regular meeting, April 29. I'll second that.
Who is that, Mike?
Yep.
Motion was made by Rich, seconded by Mike. Any questions, clarifications?
I don't know that I have a copy of the minutes, so I might abstain unless... Oh, no, here they are. Here they are, apologies.
What we try to do is review that packet before...
Oh, sorry, are you waiting on me?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Waiting to see if you have any...
I have no comments.
That's why we don't hold them.
I'm all right.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our special bond meeting on May 6. I have a second. Motion by Rich to approve the May 2 special meeting minutes.
May 6.
Yep. Seconded by Mike. Questions, comments, deletions, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. We just approve those minutes. Department head reports.
Just have me today. We'll start with the... The only department report I have right now is the police department. Police report, 29 traffics, traffic or municipal violations, 18 warnings over the last two weeks, three car crashes, one overweight permit. They've done seven and seven sets of civilian fingerprints. And if you're looking over the chief's report, you'll notice more foot patrols downtown Fairhaven, just around in the stores and up in the apartment buildings. They're making a concerted effort to get out on foot and just have more of a presence downtown Fairhaven. So, that's why you'll notice that.
Questions for Joe on the police department?
A little bit of correspondence. The Fairhaven Great School has sent their annual request to hold the Apple Fest. This year, Apple Fest falls on Saturday, September 20. They did ask for a rain date, which is the following Sunday.
September what, yeah?
20. The Public Utility Commission sent us a couple of notices. Green Mountain GMP, they're moving forward with moving their substation from down by the elementary school up to Airport Road. So, that project is still chugging right along. From my office, let's see. Talking about paving right now. Nate and I meet with the state on the 20... We will meet with the state on the 22nd of this month to talk about Class 1 paving. They have their plans drawn up. They want final review by the town to make sure they caught all of our concerns. And then, that'll be moving forward in 2026. We learned about Class 2 paving mid this month, so we should be finding out real soon whether we got Class 2 paving money or not from the state.
The Class 1 paving, does that still include... You know how they were going to change by Stewarts, the way now you just kind of yield? They're gonna... When they did the paving, they were going to fix that? Do we know whether that is going to happen at the same time or not? Or could we get a clarification from them?
Rich, we talked about this, what, last year?
Last year. But we hadn't talked about it in a while. And I just don't want us to... Because so much time went by that...
They were talking about taking that turn.
They were talking about how that yield was coming out and it was going to come straight up with two lanes and a stop?
Yep. So, as far as I know, that's how it still is. But we'll check when we go. That's what this meeting's about, is to make sure they kept... And, you know, the signs are staying, but they're... The sign bridge is staying, but they'll replace the signs. That kind of stuff, we talked about last time, so...
What date was that, Joe?
March 20... I'm sorry. May 22.
May 20?
May 22.
That's the... Yeah, but that's the meeting, it's May this, this year, going.
Okay.
We're meeting... We're going to actually meet them up north in... I think they're in Perry.
You're going up there?
Yes. Last regular meeting, we talked about... Or maybe it's two meetings ago, we talked about the tree. Tree maintenance in the park. Yeah, if you saw them, they were out there trimming up those trees, taking the dead wood out. The tree on the south side, we talked about it. It may have to come down. The guys took a look... The company took a look at it and they managed to save it. So, the big tree on the south side, southwest corner, is staying. They did put a cable in it to keep the two leaders together because there's rot right in the middle. But for now, it should be okay. Project WorkSafe was here. We talked about this before, too. Project WorkSafe visited the transfer station just to give us a once-over and make sure we were following OSHA rules. The gentleman came back with a lot of... I mean, we had a couple of small things to fix, like the fire hydrants were... Fire extinguishers were blocked by perhaps some stuff. We had to get our book that has our hazmat in it put in. But overall, he said it was in the... The transfer station was in really good shape. So, we appreciate our guys doing a good job down there. You may have heard that the flowers were stolen downtown Fairhaven. That was absolutely not true. The flower pots that were supposedly stolen had just slipped and fell down into the painted barrels.
Flowers just dropped down?
I hadn't heard it.
They're beaming.
Yep. So, the mystery was solved. So, they found the flowers. They found the flowers and the pots. So, those are... Some of them are sitting out there now. And then, we got somebody on video knocking over one can, which the gentleman said it was a total accident. We did talk to him and said, "Look, if you knock it over, pick it back up." So, all of the flower controversy was taken care of. Surveys... The surveys have been finished on Prospect Street and Union Street. For the Union Street properties, once we get those recorded, which those have been handed off to the town clerk and processed through Phil, we'll put those up for sale. The property on Prospect, this is a project we're working with.
Peter Shader?
Yeah.
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone, thank you. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. To put homes down there. So, we'll be working with them and with the state to get our elevation set down there, so it's out of the flood plain.
And that's where the old factory outlet?
Yes.
Was it?
That was the old factory outlet.
Old timers like myself.
Village designation is done. And that's just because we don't have to re-up the village designation anymore. It's an automatic now. So, we don't have to worry about that. I got a call from Mr. Helm, Bob Helm. He was wondering if our town park, the green, had a name. And I said, "Bob, I don't think it does, but I was wondering if the board wants to consider naming the park after some prominent official." And should I put this on a future agenda?
So, I think we... I think it should go on future agenda with public comment.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, and also, because there's... I'd want the Historical Society to weigh in. There's probably multiple groups that need an opportunity to be heard.
So, I'd say future agenda.
When things calm down a little bit, we can talk about it.
Let's get to this.
Because I wouldn't be surprised if someone came up and said, "It's already named. It's not formally been done yet." And the name is. So, let's... Yes.
I'll ask again after the water and sewer budget. We'll see how we're feeling. And then, something else that came up. There's a push to remove that long crosswalk right in the middle of town, again. I promised I'd bring it up to the select board with the board entertained having the removal of that crosswalk on a future agenda.
Does anybody have any idea where Allen should we call?
The... I know I hate to give you multiple items for your meet with the Route 4 paving. Are there some state regs and everything that when you're... For crosswalks, that there's someone there that might be able to let us know what kind of trouble we get into if we just go and... You know how... And get rid of a crosswalk? I'm pretty sure there was quite a bit of research and everything that was done when that went in. And it was a... If I remember correctly, that was a major issue for some of the people. It wasn't... Not everyone was for that, and it still went in?
The crosswalk that goes across Main?
The one that goes from Durfey's?
Across Main.
Across Main.
You have a...
I just... An observation, because I was there... I was at the meetings when they were discussing this. It had been decided not to put it back in there. And then, the people who, at that time, it was the supervisor union, where is Fairhaven concerned about... Slate Valley cares is now. And two of the ladies that worked in the office said specifically, were saying that it's the truck traffic that they were most concerned with. They had counted 75 trucks that went by in one day. Big trucks. That went by in one day. There has to be a... That crosswalk has to be in there. And even though it had already been decided, it was a re-decision, and they put it back in there. But when they put it back in there, at that point, then they had to go by the new ADA laws. So, we wound up losing six parking places because they had to have their bulb out that's in front of...
So, more... Thank you. That's helpful. So, it sounds like you can... We can put it on for an agenda item. I think it's one that's going to take a while. And I just... Sometimes, I just wonder...
These and these folks that want it gone, what is their alternative? Have they...
Right.
Have they given you an alternative?
Parking spaces back.
Yeah, but what about another crosswalk?
For the crosswalk, though.
Only have the little one at the bus, and that's it?
So, no crosswalk?
I... Yeah. I think it's a long putt, but we can put it on the future agenda, even from the state. Saying, yeah.
And the last thing. The Memorial Day Parade is coming. Reese has done a nice job pulling us all together. We're going to try something a little different this year when it comes to the lineup, though. We were for... Since I've been here, at least, we were lining up down in the parking lot and blocking up all of our parking with the parade. That seems really counterintuitive because people always... People often complain, "There's no parking." But then, we strip out all the parking during one of our busiest times of the year. So, what we're going to try this year is we're still going to have the honor guard start down by the cannon. They're still going to, you know, shoot their volley there and march up Main. However, the big trucks and everybody else are going to sit on West Street, excuse me. And then, when the honor guard walks up, the parade will follow right behind down Conarby.
Joe?
Just a quick idea. Could we have a stage on Cottage Street and just come up Liberties and around? That way, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, and it doesn't really affect, A, parking and flow of traffic during that time? Food for thought?
It's an idea.
Food for thought, or off the post office road?
Any other... Just one question, Joe, on that one right there. Have we talked to the Legion and they're on board?
Well, I talked to Galvin, Sean Galvin. He's the one that's helped.
Who usually...
Yeah, he's the one that's been...
Commander, the...
I just wanted to make sure... Everyone needed to know was aware of the... That there's a change in plan and looking at different things and doing what's best.
Yeah. And we talked to the police and fire as well, just to make sure all of our people are on board, so...
Okay.
There will be a bump in the... But I'm sure we'll be fine.
Okay.
And that's what I got for you today.
Board members, any questions for Joe as part of his manager's report?
On BBW, have you got anything for them?
They're good. They're trying to stay... They're trying to stay ahead of this weather. They were upgrading yesterday, patching holes. They spent the day digging this water line out here last week that they never could find a water leak. So, they think what they were hearing was a plugged-up sewer line. We did have a sinkhole over there, but it's... We don't know where that water came from. So, it's a little iffy right there, right now. That's what I thought, Rich. That doesn't seem right.
Interesting.
Yeah.
More to come.
Yeah, more to come on that one, but...
When you were talking paving, on Transfer Station Road, paving that?
Yeah, we were waiting for it to dry out. So, we had... It was about $50,000 in paving left. So, we thought it would be a good bang for our buck to finally pave the dump road. This is a road that they'd spent, I think I heard, a hundred and something thousand years ago to dig the... Kind of the muck out of the road, put a new base in, put down fabric, put down a nice gravel top. And then, like we do, it's like, "We'll pave it later." Later never came. So, we're catching up to that. Now, we're going to pave this road.
Okay. Interesting. Rose?
Joe, him? With all this rain lately, has that caused... Aside from that issue on West Street, which I think we had before all this rain? Is that correct? Have we had any problems specifically because of all the rain?
We've had some... We've had reports of banks washing out, some puddling. Not to the extent that other towns have had problem. We tended to be okay during these heavy rain events.
I was just wondering.
Moving right along, then. Old business, select board rules.
Would it be okay with the board if we table this until next meeting?
You sign them in.
Yep. Then we'll table it until next meeting. New business, okay. The swap shop rules.
So, as I was told, it's full of typos, and I apologize. It's not my strong point. But you get the idea.
You get the gist.
Yep. So, we'll create a clean copy when we go to... What the idea is to make a little metal sign to put on the building. But you get the idea here. The swap shop is going to use what we call the old dog pound. And the idea is to get some of this usable... Some of the usable products out of our waste stream and get it to people who, you know, who may find a use, or, you know, maybe they'll sell it on eBay. I don't know.
And in case someone's just jumping on board late in the game and saying, "Swap shop, what are they talking about?" Can you give us a little bit of background around that?
Sure. So, as far as I can tell, this is uniquely... At least, the name is uniquely New England. What it is, it's a small building down in the transfer station where people can come and leave good products. Good, like, I don't know, records or tapes or... I don't know. Something that somebody else can get a use out of. And then, somebody comes along and digs through the treasures, finds something they may want, and then they take it home with them. Again, it's the idea that, "Hey, I don't have a need for these old eight-tracks, but somebody might want them. So, instead of throwing them in the dumpster, we get them to somebody who might want them." And that's the idea behind it.
Bill, in you.
I'd like to commend the board on doing that because years ago, it used to all just be in front of the compactor. And there were some items that would get ruined with the rain. So, yes, I'm going to say I commend the board on this one. I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the gist of the... The general gist of the rules is, for those that don't have a copy in front of them...
So, it's good products. It's good products somebody can use. And we gave some examples, and this isn't all encompassing, but it gives you an idea. So, just an example. It says cleaner gently-used items, so nothing that's completely destroyed. Household... Housewares, tools, small appliances, you know, knives, forks, cups, toys, board games, books. I'm going to say clothing. I didn't take that off of there. But if clothing gets out of hand, we'll have to stop clothing because I've seen people just bring bags of old dumpy clothes and just leave them. Somebody might want this. Now, they're molded, so...
Clothing could become an issue very quickly.
Clothing is... It's a stretch, but...
Small furniture, things like that are great. Working electronics is great.
No television, though. You know, we do take televisions for free. You can just put those in the pile. But if you have a VCR, maybe you don't use anymore, which can also go in the pile, but maybe somebody wants a VCR. Things we're not taking, mattresses and upholstered furniture. We're not trying to spread bedbugs. We don't want to do that. TVs is in there. Paints, we're not taking your paints or your chemicals. Please don't leave gallons of paint. Tires are car parts. No weapons. We have, in my last... In my last town, we did find just a box full of shells, bullets. So, please don't leave your weapons or your ammunition. Larger appliances, fridges, stoves, air conditioning units. That all has to go to the waste side of things. And last, it says, it's kind of common sense. If it's trash, don't leave it there.
I have a couple of questions about the swap shop. The resources that we have to support it. Is there additional staff being added? Or is the existing staff going to be operating it? How's that going to look?
Yep. So, it's existing staff. We did have... Shaden was working over at the wastewater plant. We moved him over to the transfer station. And he's actually in training because it's... Some of our folks are heading towards retirement. So, we had to get people trained up, ready to take their place. So, Shaden's... He's working there right... He's working the swap shop now. And it's actually his baby. He's done a nice job building some shelves and keeping the place clean. So, for now, it's him.
And who is it? What's his name?
His name is Shaden.
Rosie, yeah?
Shaden Crimes, yeah.
Regarding the clothing, I just... Quite honestly, I don't think you need to keep... I don't think you need to have it over there. You've got two thrift stores in town. You've got the St. Mary's, and you've got Slate... Slate Valley... I always... I keep wanting to call it Fairhaven, but Slate Valley cares. And then, you've also got those drop boxes. I really don't think you need to take up space in your swap shop with the clothing. And I just think it's going to wind up being more of a hassle than... Than it's worth it.
I think the clothing will get out of hand very quickly.
We can take that up.
Take...
Yeah, I think I...
Sounds like the consensus. Let's take clothing out. I also don't want to get in competition with the places that do, and they have a system set up for sorting and getting...
So, I sat in on a call this afternoon for a new sort of committee that's being set up at the state level, but they're looking for... I don't really know what to call it exactly. They're calling it REVT. And the idea is to sort of create a network of people that are advocating at a local level for more swap shops and more creative solutions for the reduction of landfill through reduce, reuse, recycle, right? So, swap shops were a big topic of conversation, just by coincidence. And I spoke with a member of the staff at the Addison County Solid Waste and then another member of the staff at the Wyndham County Solid Waste, talking specifically to them about their swap shops in anticipation of this sort of being on the horizon. And one thing that they both noted was the need to have someone physically on location at the swap shop during drop-off hours because otherwise, people just seem to drop off whatever they got and as much as they got. So, is that the intention? Will Shaden be physically present the entire hours of operation?
Yeah, I'm not saying he's going to be in the shack, but that's what he's responsible for now. He's also responsible for cleaning the area. So, yeah, he's going to be there. And it's... I've done this before in another town, and yeah, it's 100% true. If you leave it for too long, it fills up with garbage, and you've got to go and hoe it out, so... Yep.
All right, cool.
Yeah, I 100% hear that.
And I know, and just from donating at Goodwill myself, it's the same there. Like, they are adamant about what they will and will not accept. And they're always doing triage right at that drop-off location. So, I feel like it definitely needs to be maintained a priority.
Are there questions or comments on swap shop?
No.
So, your rollout... You might have told me, and I... Rollout date for you, your swap shop?
Rollout? As soon as I get the rules changed, we'll open it up Thursday. They started collecting a few good treasures they found, so... Soft opening.
Okay. You mentioned as part of your town manager report about the village center designation being done. Do you have more you want... We want to add on that for item B, village center designation?
No, sir. That was a holder, just in case I had to have the board sign something.
Okay.
No, that's complete.
Perfect. Water sewer contract permit? Connection?
Yeah, so this is a, a connection from Stephen and Bonnie Clement. Um, they're putting a, uh, is it a double wide on Academy Street?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're putting thirty-five Academy, they're getting a new double wide down there and they want to connect to our water and sewer system. They have paid all the, they have paid all the fees. Um, and our water and sewer, uh, staff have signed off on the connection. So it's up to the board now to approve or not approve.
So entertain a motion to, to approve the water sewer connection?
Academy.
Permit?
I'll make a motion to approve the water sewer connection on Academy Street.
I'll second that motion.
Questions? You know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, item number eight, water sewer budget review. First look at the budget.
So we're, we're right on time for the budget this time of year is, is when we do it. Should take no more than three, maybe four meetings if we get, we get winded, long-winded. Um, but just, just a real quick overview, water, water is up only 1.76%. Sewer is up 2.38%. So the, our staff really sharpened their pencils and did a nice job keeping those, keeping those expenses down. Uh, this does include the rate for the new, um, the new pay rates for the union and it has a 15% increase after January 1 for the, for the health benefits. Um, just because we expect it to go up about that much, give or take.
Really?
So, yeah, it's, it's bad. But yeah, it's, that's the soup and nuts.
Okay. And they'll be, we'll be starting at our next meeting, talking sewer with Carrie?
Yes, sir. So the next meeting will be, Carrie shall come and talk sewer and following the next, the meeting after that will be water with Mike Ladue.
Any questions from the board for Joe before? I think we, we just take a close look at it and be ready to, when, when Carrie comes in to talk sewer. Good. We are now at item nine, two minutes for public comment. Mr. Billings.
Yes, my name's Jonathan Billings. I've got two things. Um, one, um, during department heads, I don't see them sitting present. If we could work on getting our department heads actually physically present to give their reports. It doesn't have to be every, every meeting, but every other meeting. I think it would be more beneficial and more respectful to the taxpayers. And I mean, all the departments, water department, EMS, fire, DPW and chief of police, it would be appreciated. Number two, um, concerning what Mr. Gunter said during his manager report, um, talking about the Union Street properties. Um, I've done some Googling, I've done some research about Mr. Lucci, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lucci. I believe the research I've seen says you work in the real estate market or industry.
Yeah, would you like me to elaborate or do you want me to lead?
You can if you'd like to, that's up to you.
Um, yeah, well, you go.
Um, whereas Mr. Lucci works in the real estate market and concerning those properties, the town had lied all the way through the Vermont Supreme Court and everything, claiming that the town is the highest winning bidder. They cannot provide four checks to prove that the town legally and lawfully bid during the 31814 tax sale, even though Mr. Gunter tells me that I've been fed wrong information, which is the same information that the town has given me. Um, the town has failed to record the reports of sale within 30 days of the tax sale because they never bid. You can't record something if you don't pay for it. The town then recorded the deeds April 1st, 2015. The town has broken title chain. The town does not have clear marketable title to those properties. That's why I was asking Mr. Doran if he's seen the four checks. He told me no comment and then threatened police on me if I showed up at his property. But that's here and there. I have no intentions of showing up at his property. So if the town doesn't want to dig themselves any deeper into lawsuits, I would hope that the Town of Fairhaven Select Board does a title search on those properties because title thirty-two, fifty-two.
Your two minutes, your two minutes are now up. Thank you for your comment. And Mr. Lucci, you do not have to respond. This is a comment period and that's all it is. Any other public comment? Roseanne.
I just want to, uh, say what an awesome, the, the Fairhaven blooms project was, it, it's just done wonderful things. Besides beautifying, although we're waiting for some of the stuff to bloom, um, but besides beautifying downtown area, um, I was really impressed with the number of people that came out to support it in the rain. I mean, I, really, it, it, I was, I just wanted to commend everybody who volunteered their time. Um, all the businesses that supported it. I, it, it's just a really great project and I'm hoping that we continue to do it in the future.
Thank, thank you for the comment. Any other public comment? Moving on to parking lot. Anything for the parking lot?
I believe he has a comment. He just.
Your name, your name and, and where you live?
I have a citation that I got cited from Humphreys a year and a half later. I don't think that's correct. I have the citation here in my hand, here.
We, we, this is a com, this is a comment period, not something where we take.
Okay, so why is this a year and a half later?
Do you have any other comment?
No.
Thank you for your comment. Moving on to, moving on to parking.
Why is this legal?
Moving on to parking lot. Anyone have anything to do with, any questions on DPW garage, salt shed?
Uh, I don't have any at this time.
No, this is.
It, you can, you, if, you need to sit down and be quiet if you're gonna continue being in this meeting or you'll need to leave.
Right. Don't worry. Your ass is grass.
Okay, back to parking lot. Anything we need to talk about on the parking lot?
Um, I don't have anything. I think everything's progressing along with the bond vote. Everything's bolstered, right? Everything's bolstered. I've heard no comments.
Everything's, everything's right on target.
Did you receive a statement from the guard or no?
I did, yes. Um.
Sure, it's on, under the.
Yeah, under the, under the DPW.
DPW garage?
Yeah, so it was, there was, during the bond meeting, um, on the sixth, there was a little bit of emotion um, around the closing of that, that facility. And then it seemed to imply that because the town was buying the building, the, the facility was closing. Um, and just to be clear, that's not the case. Um, the military did send over a statement saying that this, this facility is gonna be closed regardless of who buys it and that they're actively looking for a buyer. It's just Fairhaven is the first, they approached us first and gave us the first opportunity. So it's not that the Town of Fairhaven is putting the military out of business. The military was leaving anyway. This is just a great opportunity for our community to get a really nice building at a really good price.
Did they, did they provide anything in the way of a timeline of closure for the other facilities or?
My understanding was July 1 was when that facility was closing.
Okay.
Regardless of who buys it.
Thank you.
And as far as the subdivision, go, oh, go ahead.
Um, regarding the, the army thing there, um, is there some way to possibly get the, what's his, what's his rank? I don't know.
Colonel Roy?
What is it?
Colonel Roy?
Colonel, Colonel White?
Roy, I think the person's name.
Is there some way to get him to maybe one of the select board meetings?
I wouldn't.
I've asked if they could provide somebody to come and just speak to these points and they said no. They were happy to provide a, um, a statement, but they weren't gonna come to a meeting. They, they have given us a date, and I want to say it was the second, but don't quote me on that, um, for a walkthrough of the facility, for, so the way the community can see it. So that'll be an opportunity to.
I, as long as they could do something in the public because, um, I think, was it Rich, were you the one that was mentioning about, or maybe it was Mike, that some people were upset because they thought that we were putting the army out of business up there? And I just thought it would be nice if there could be a statement from.
That's what Joe just cleared up.
So that's, that's what the statement is going to say.
That is the.
That is what the statement was.
That is the statement. And also.
Where? I'm sorry.
Also, when we had that meeting, the ask was, because they hadn't been talked to, so we did reach out to Colonel Roy and my understanding is those conversations have taken place?
Yeah, the Colonel Roy and then, um, his staff and then the, the staff under them, um, met and they, and I'm not privy to, to their internal dialogue, but yeah, they met and talked about it. What they said, I don't know.
So there's not gonna be any more hassle with that?
I would like to think there wouldn't be, but of course, who knows, but we're moving forward. Yeah.
I've had, I was gonna say several, it's not several. I think three people speak to me about, they had seen the handout that you had online, was it? I didn't see it online, but wherever they saw it and they felt it was well done and quite,
Yeah.
quite well done and explained the thing very well.
Great, thank you.
Well, it wasn't me, although I had seen it and I agreed that.
Under parking lot, uh, we have, um, subdivision regulations. Tomorrow night, when the planning commission and the Act 181 training is going on, I, I bet the planning commission might even have an update on the subdivision, uh, there. So there's, as you were saying, Rich, there's quite a bit still going on.
All, all five of those projects are moving forward.
Are moving forward. Good. Board roundtable, Sam.
Well, I don't know, this is more of a amusing, uh, kind of question and answer. I often find myself wondering about how long it takes shaws to fill in potholes at the entryway to their parking lot. Does the town provide any kind of assistance to them where that's concerned or is that all on, on the?
It's all private.
That's, yeah. I, I figured, but, you know, given how heavily trafficked it was.
It's gotten bad. It do take a long time to fix.
It really do.
For some reason.
That is huge.
They're pretty bad.
I get that a lot. You wouldn't, people will call me and ask me, "What are you gonna do about the parking lot?" Nothing.
They're not gonna probably dump any more money into this since it's for sale. I highly doubt they'll do anything.
I don't know.
The whole place is for sale?
Every year.
That and the lot next to it is too. Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
No, good, I mean, hey, there's no, no bad question. Mike, anything for us?
I've got nothing tonight. I just, I had one thing. I, a lady stopped, stopped me and showed me a hole on the side of the road and she was afraid the little kids were gonna fall in. And I went and looked at it and, yes, it was a hole where an old telephone pole was. And Nate, I believe, is already taking care of it. So.
And the only item I had of our, just a reminder that tomorrow night, seven o'clock, is when we're having the, the select board and the planning commission meet together for Act 181 training and.
I didn't know nothing about that.
Okay, I'm glad I brought, brought that. Tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
I'm unable to be.
The Rutland Regional Planning Commission is coming over to, uh, to do the Act 181. And when you throw out things just like acronyms, when you say 181, Joe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a lot of, of, like our wetland designations too or, there's a, there's an overall map of the area. It's well worth, it all ties into the Rutland County plan and they're required to meet with every municipality and, and do this training for an act that was, came in. I'm sure you'll hear some about river corridors and all kinds of stuff.
Is that a meeting, is that already warranted or?
It's already been warned and, yeah.
I, I don't know how long I've had it on my calendar, but I certainly have it on my calendar. I think I had a stake and they thought it was happening at our RPC.
There'll be, there'll be, there's materials. If you, if you can't make it, there'll be materials and things that, uh, we can, we can pass on because I think what Joe, you and I went to the training a week, a week ago?
Couple weeks.
Over Rutland Regional Planning. Uh, important is additional training to that, yeah. Good. Uh, review of financials, can I put you, uh, under the gun again for making the motions for?
I can do that.
Review of financials, reports?
Just a minute.
Okay. Make a motion to pay the payroll of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
Well, I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike? No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The warrants, this is a big one. Seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and one penny. And that's school, a big school payment and, uh, the heat project. The MRR project, right? I can't read.
Yeah, the, the municipal.
Municipal.
Energy resiliency, energy project, yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Checkbook status, one million, six hundred and six thousand, fifty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Thank you. Okay, is there a need for an executive session?
There is. Under the contract negotiation.
I will entertain a motion for executive session.
I'll make a motion, we enter into executive session under one VSA 313.
A, a one for?
A one, yeah.
For contract negotiation. Who is?
Negotiation.
I'll second that.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.